To our public meeting of planning for Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, accept the agenda. Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moving myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accept the public meeting of planning agenda of Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty four.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Ratify the minutes. Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Caddell, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accept the minutes of the public meeting of planning of Monday, February twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to zoning amendments, Z zero one, two thousand and twenty four. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to remind council, these three applications that we're seeing today, we're not going to vote on it. I'm going to bring them back at the subsequent council meeting for actual voting. Just wanted to remind. So the first one, zero one, two thousand and twenty four. The owner for this file, Valdon Farms, Inc. The location of the property is eighteen nine nine five Canyon Concession Road four in Maxville. So as you can see there, the address is Maxville. It's very close to Greenfield. So it's in between Greenville, Greenfield, Maxville, right there on, just a little bit south. It's the green box that you see there. It's a large agricultural property. A little close up of the property. So again, my green box is the property in question. You have the blue section that is severed off from the pink section. And on the pink section, sorry, is where you have the single family dwelling that's being severed off the agricultural land. So it's your typical prohibited ag, prohibited residential. The official plan designation, agricultural resource lands. Zoning designation, general agriculture, and there's a little bit of flood plain on the north corner there. But just to clarify, the flood plain is only on the agricultural portion, not on, not where we're separating the single family dwelling. So the purpose of this application, as I mentioned, it's part of the consent, the conditions of a consent application. V seven dash two thousand and twenty three, conditions four and five. So the first one, we want to rezone the retained portion. So it's a thirty six point ninety eight acres portion. We need to rezone that to AG two forty two, which will be to acknowledge the lot area from the required seventy four to thirty six point ninety eight. So the property was already smaller than the required seventy four acres. So now we're basically just recognizing this. We're also acknowledging the deficiency lot frontage. So for an agricultural lot, you need two hundred meters. We're proposing a hundred and eight meter here. And we also need to acknowledge the interior yard setback for a small shed. I'll show it on the next slide there. So it's just for one building. And we also need to rezone the severed portion to AG two forty three, simply to prohibit agricultural uses. So this is the, the survey, the building location certificate. As you can see, so it's like north is on your left side there. Basically, there's two larger buildings, if you will, that are staying with the agricultural lands. On this plan, they're called the barn wood metal siding shed and the metal siding shed. So those two are okay. The only interior, the interior yard I'm talking about is just for the really smaller shed. It's closer to the property line than what required. So just because of the way the lands are, are made over there, they decided to put the property line there. So we're basically just acknowledging that. It's a very small building. So they need nine meters and they're proposing one point eighty five meter. So it's a short distance, but it's a small building, so it's not bad. As you can see, on the residential portion, we have the single family dwelling, the pool and the septic. So that's not a flag lot. So the house was closer to the, to the road. They went with a square lot of two, two point ninety two acres. So it's a decent sized property. It has direct frontage on Canyon Concession four as well. So for this here, as I mentioned, the lots are already smaller than seventy four acres. We're severing off as a surplus dwelling. The two other buildings are currently agricultural and they're staying on the agricultural portion. So there's no, there's, for us, there's no change of use permit or anything to do here because all the buildings are staying with the ag lands. The new lines are kept to a minimum decent size for the property. I'll show it on the picture next. There's like three lines on each side, so it just makes sense to keep it at two point ninety two. So that's why they were permitted to do so. So yeah, no change of use. There you go. So that's the property. I have a better one after, but this is the driveway for the single family dwelling at the rear. The barn that you see on the left hand side is staying with the agricultural land. So basically, there's the driveway and there, I think I have, I'll show it, yeah, right here. So the tree line that you see on both sides of the picture there are actually going to be the property lines now. So there, it's, it's not being cropped or anything, so that's why it can remain with the agricultural lands. So this slide I had before was for the entrances. There are currently two entrances on that property. So the one you see at the top is the newer one. It was created especially for the fields. It's just west of that tree line there. So there's an entrance for the field. And the one you see on the bottom is the same one as you have in the pictures. It's the existing entrance with the civic number for the single family dwelling, which will also remain. There's no civic number for the field. One could be issued, but there's no new entrances that are proposed with this severance. They both have, both portions have their own entrance. And yeah, so just very quickly, Planning Act gives municipality the permission to pass such bylaws. As you know, the PPS permits severances in agricultural lands when it's a surplus dwelling, when we're separating residents from the farm. And the SDG County, SDG County's official plan promotes that as well, as long as it's part of the goals and objective of the property and makes sense. So based on that, in conclusion, proposed zoning amendment conforms to the policies of the SDG official plan, consistent with the provincial policy statement and compliant with the Township's zoning bylaw number thirty nine dash two thousand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Were there any, anybody from the public who brought anything up?
No, sorry, no, forgot, no, nothing.
Questions or comments? Counselor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, you know, on these newly severed agricultural and residential lots, and you mentioned the civic sign, like, you know, the ones for the farm, you know, the, the field one. Can we not put that as a requirement when they do apply for severance? Just put it in there? I don't know if it's caused them anything, but it's just for safety reasons, something happened. It'd be nice for us to start doing that because we have a lot of these.
We could definitely, yes. It's a, in most cases, it would be a good idea. The problem is sometime with agricultural lands, it, it wouldn't make, like, it, there's no room for another civic. But yeah, definitely, I can check it out. It would make, especially when the entrance is there already.
But not, I mean, not, not a regular civic, you know, the one that the farmers, the little girl's name there.
Emily? Why for?
Yeah.
When we passed that civic number bylaw, we had the discussion with council and we're, it's the same civic number signs we're using even for fields.
Okay.
Same point. So there, yeah, there's another, it's, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars for a civic number yet, so it would be that.
We should, I don't know, we should add that to.
I can definitely propose it when they're doing this.
It'd be easier, it'd be well, be handy also when somebody applies for a burning permit or something. You know, you'd have exactly the lot instead of going west of this and whatever.
Okay, yep.
That's a good idea. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to Z zero two, two thousand and twenty four. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the owner for this file, Madame Natalie Cousineau. The location, one fifty Bishop Street North here in Alexandria. So as you can see right there, just north of town, a little close up. So it's just to locate everybody, it's pretty straightforward. It's the property just south of Gurgers Tower Dus, or where Mike Sovi built the fourplex there. So it's just south of there. That's where we're, back behind the White Rock Motel. So that's the property. So that's, Madame Cousineau lives right there in the green box, one fifty Bishop Street North. This application here, so basically, the owner is currently in the process of doing a severance. So as you can see, we have that blue shaded box and the, and the pink shaded box. So it's being severed off at this time. Just to expedite the process, the owner has decided, because the, the, right now, they're thinking of selling the pink portion to another owner. That other owner right now is thinking that he wants to build a semi-detach on that portion. So what we're rezoning here, although the address is still one fifty, it's actually only the smaller pink portion. We're, we want, we're proposing to rezone it to R two. So it's just, my green box is a little bit confusing here. We're only discussing the pink portion of the property. So the official plan designation, urban sediment area of Alexandria, and it's within the residential district. So zoning designation, currently R one, so it's the little yellow box that you see. And our maps have not been updated. So as you can see in there, you've got some institutional, but mostly residential. So all the pink and red is residential. The property just north of that, so where Mike Sovi built the fourplex, it's, it's, right now, it's R three. So you've got a good mix of R three, R four and R one in there. What we're proposing here is R two. So yeah, purpose of the application, rezone subject lands from R one to R two. Purpose of this is to construct a semi-detached dwelling on the subject lands. So as you can see here, I just put that table there just to show the difference. So the, the severance is currently being done. Both properties are compliant with both R one and R two, in the sense that they're both big enough. So it's not like they're undersized lots. They're both wide enough as well. So as you can see here, for, for especially lot frontage with semi-detach, sometimes that's an issue. In this case, they're proposing ninety meters and the minimum requirement for R two is eighteen meters. So that's not a problem. We do not have any plans or site plan at this time, so just want to change the zoning. All the setbacks that you see there would have to be complied with, with the new building. Otherwise, the owner would have to come back for another minor variance. So sometimes we, we put the minor variance within that same zoning. In this case, we're just changing the zone and the new owner will have to deal with these setbacks or apply for minor variance. But as you know, in the area, the, the fourplex is almost done. One and a half, very high building, all around. It's in a hill. So the, the maximum height is ten point five meters, which is not going to be reached. Right now, they're thinking of doing a one-story semi-detach. The, we're changing, changing it to R two. The new owner is currently thinking of building a semi-detach. Just keep in mind that because we're changing it to R two, doesn't have to be a semi-detach. So one could still, like, the owner, if the sale doesn't go through, she could still decide to just sell the lands for a single family or whatever. But this would be like the maximum that she could do with the land. So yeah, R two for a semi-detach, as I mentioned above. So yeah, the subject land of what we're discussing here, ninety meters by thirty two meters in depth. So it's an acreage of approximately point fifteen, which is big, big enough for an R two zone property. Semi-detach is proposed. There's going, there's lots of room for parking, so that won't be an issue. We're also proposing some, an attached garage, so there's going to be like three parking spots per, per sides. No site plan is going to be required. We are going to ask for, I don't know if some of you have heard, but we are going to eventually run into some issues with the, with drainage over there because there's like with, where Mike Sovi built across the street, the water, all the neighbors are currently diverting their water on that property. But that owner is also doing a severance, so he may decide to develop the land. So what we're going to ask for here, like we do for all these smaller properties, is to ask for a grading and drainage plan. It's probably going to show that water is simply going to be diverted across the street because there is a culvert. Eventually, there's going to be an issue, so I just want to, a little heads up that eventually something will come out of that for drainage. Entrance is not a problem. Civic number is not a problem either. Two, okay, why the, show it on my picture. So right now, so that's Mike Sovi's, the, the townhouse that he built. You see the, the red building and the white building. Those two buildings will be with the new property. So the owner is aware of that. What, what's going to happen basically is that we're going to create a property with two accessory buildings that are illegal because you cannot, you're not supposed to have the accessory building before the dwelling. So with the owner, we simply mentioned that the, the lands would have to be developed within two years, I think we gave them. And then the buildings would either have to be moved or demolished or whatever the plan will be at that time. So just to put a little line there on where it will be, it's just past those two buildings there. So the property that you see there would be rezone R two for a semi-detach. Another picture, the house that you see a little higher is where Madame Cousineau lives. So I'll show it under the picture. So she's splitting the lot there. She's staying on the Bishop Street North and this new property will be facing Dominion Street North. So that's across the street from that new lot. What you see there is actually White Rock Motel, so it's right there. And you, in my picture that you have there, you actually see the culvert under the road. And that's where all the water is going right now. So it's the lowest point from both sides. So I'm not sure yet. I'll discuss with the Public Works, the Public Works Director to see what could be done. And that's a view from Bishop Street North. That's where the house is. So the severance, that's the address that you have, but it's actually on the other road on Dominion Street North. And here, again, pretty straightforward, Town Council is allowed to pass these zoning bylaws. The PPS encourages such development. Some, some growth and development is good for town. Well, how did they call that? Densification is also promoted in the county's official plan. So based on these, the proposed zoning amendments, compliant with the Township's zoning bylaw and with the intent and purpose of the SDG official plan, consistent with the PPS, and it promotes the efficient use of land, and deemed appropriate for urban sediment areas such as Alexandria. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Just on the other side of the road, we know you were talking about a new, someone, someone, is it the White Rock that's looking to?
Yes, yes.
It's still ongoing.
Consent is in, it's currently ongoing. They're creating a new lot there too.
They're going to wish they put in the services back in the day.
Yep.
They were free and they declined. Okay, no further questions or comments? Yes, sorry, go ahead. Just to ask if there was anything public wise, if anybody comments or?
Oh, no, sorry, I was, no, we have received no comments from any agencies or members of the book.
Great. Okay, we'll move on. Z zero three, two thousand and twenty four.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the owner for this file, William Franklin. Location is twenty eight seventy Lockenwart Road. So it's right there, the, just to locate everybody, the red line that you see there is the four seventeen. So it's just close to the four seventeen, just when you get off the thirty four on Lockenwart. A little close up right here, so it's the property in green. And again, it's the typical surplus dwelling from agricultural land. So here also, we're creating a more rectangular property. There's no flag lot here, so the house is close to the road. Official plan designation, agricultural resource lands. Zoning designation, again here, general agricultural and flood plain. So as you can see, there's a creek running right across the property entirely on the agricultural land. So the, the, you know, the single family dwelling property is, will be zoned agricultural. So the purpose for this application is to rezone, again here, the typical prohibit. So to re, rezone the retained portion, sorry, of one hundred and one acres from general agricultural to ag two forty four, to acknowledge the deficiency in lot frontage on Lockenwart Road. So we're required to have two hundred. We're proposing a hundred and twenty six. And to prohibit residential development. And we're proposing to rezone the severed portion of one point thirteen acres to prohibit agricultural use on the property. So that's what it is right there. The green roof that you have there is a single family dwelling. There's a detached garage. There's a septic system. So the land is currently one hundred and two acres. They're severing off the house. There's no, the, the property lines, there's no requirement for setbacks. And there are no buildings on the agricultural lands. And there are also no agricultural buildings that we're keeping with the residential lots. So there's no change of use required. There's no setbacks required. The only thing is the frontage deficiency for the ag lands. There you go. That's the picture of the house right there on my next, okay, why there? So for that one, there's three entrances on the property. So there's one that has civic number two, twenty eight seventy. So that's the one on your left. And then there's that entrance that you see right in front of, of me right there. That entrance is also remaining on the residential land. So the property line is actually right beside that entrance on the, where you see the tree. That's the new property line there. And then for the fields, they also have their entrance that you see on the, completely on the right hand side there. That's the existing entrance for the fields. So here also, maybe we can mention the civic number. But there are no proposed, no new proposed entrance for that property. And that's just looking on both ways. So you can see mostly rural residential properties on either side, a lot of cash crop fields. We have received no comments from the public or any agency, aside from reason region for that creek there. So yeah, again, same thing as before, it's the surplus dwelling. So it's being kept to the minimum, this, minimum area and everything is compliant. So based on all of that, the proposed zoning amendment conforms to the policies of SDG official plan. It's consistent with PPS and it's compliant with the Township's zoning bylaw thirty nine dash two thousand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Questions or comments on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, does the, the, the land to the, I don't know whether that's east or west, to the, on the left, to the left?
To the left, okay, yes.
Is that farmed?
I believe, no, it's a bush.
I'm just wondering, why not keep that land with the house then?
It's not that, it's not the same.
It's not?
Oh, yes, you're, yeah. I don't know.
They didn't, they?
To keep the minimum, just, simply to keep it to a minimum.
Right, which in this case doesn't really make a lot of sense because it doesn't look like they're going to be farming it.
Farmer could eventually decide to clear cut, I guess, but.
The original application actually had more of the trees with it and the county's declined it.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Jacob. Counselor Massey.
Mr. Mayor. Moved by, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden. There been no further business to discuss. The public meeting was adjourned at five fifty two P M.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. We'll take a seven minute break. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. The meeting will open with the Canadian National Anthem. Ask everyone to please stand. Jamie? I don't know the words to that one either. Apologize for the technical difficulties, so we will move on. Call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? On the in-camera portion of the meeting, we'll add matters dealing with an identifiable individual. Any further, anything further? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to adoption of the previous minutes, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated, special closed session of council, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and regular meeting of council, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to, there are no delegations this evening, staff reports, Administrative Department Emergency Management Bylaw eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-four, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts report number A D two thousand and twenty-four dash zero five, Emergency Management Bylaw, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw eighteen two thousand and twenty-four, being a bylaw to provide for the establishment and adoption of an emergency management program for the Township of North Glengarry, and that bylaw number eighteen two thousand and twenty-four, we read a first, second, and third time and adopted in open council this eighth day of April two thousand and twenty-four, right? Twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Jenna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Emergency Management Control Group held their first meeting of March of this year. And during this meeting, they reviewed the emergency response plan for the township, as well as the Emergency Management Bylaw, which is required per section two point one eight of the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act. So this bylaw covers all the requirements the township and its emergency management plan has to do. And upon the review, it was noticed that an update was required to section two point ten, which is to reflect the change of the group's call-out system should the EMC have to gather. So the change was from the who's responding to the buoyant alert app. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to Community Services Department. Proposed changes to ice startup date and tournaments, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report C S two thousand and twenty-four dash zero eight, proposed changes to ice startup date and tournaments for discussion, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry approves of a startup date at the Glengarry Sports Palace of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and that the Council approves a modification of the ice rental contracts to include the option of one tournament per association.
Okay, thank you. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, we're bringing to council two items that really affect the operating budgets of our arenas. As we know, our budgets are tight. In the past, when we had issues such as cancellations or early startup dates, we were able to absorb that as part of our operating budget. But at this point, we really can't, because our budgets are so tight. So we're bringing up these two subjects to you, which are the number of tournaments, as well as the startup date for the Glengarry Sports Palace only. So what we're looking at doing is postponing the startup date for the G S P, which traditionally was targeted around the twenty-fifth of August. So that means that we actually start up the ice ten days earlier. By pushing the period over to starting up the thirteenth, that means that we would be able to start up after Labor Day. It would reduce the costs of overtime, because we wouldn't be incurring any of those costs over the holiday weekend. It would also be traditionally less warm a month than August, though that wasn't the case last year. And based on the previous year's usage, and you have a table showing you that, we see that the first two and two and a half weeks at Glengarry Sports Palace are really low. We saw that there were only forty-one hours of ice that were rented by outside users, and only thirteen of those were by the junior B Glens. And as we know, there's been some change over at that level also. So we may even see less ice for tryouts at this point. So when we look at that, we're really trying to be conscious of where we can have effective cost savings, and this would be one of it. There would be the lower labor costs, and also the utility costs would be much more closer to normal usage instead of starting up at a warm ice time. As always, if we weren't able to open the ice earlier, we would be offering that up for public skating to the general public as well as shinny, and that's a really great way of breaking in the ice. So that was the section regarding the startup date. Would council like me to stop here, should I address the tournament dates also at the same time?
We'll stop there for a second. Are there any questions on opening? Go ahead, Counselor Massey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the past years, like, you've been concerned that, you know, some teams wanted to start earlier in August, and then they had to go somewhere else outside of the North Glengarry to get their hockey ice. Is that a concern here? Is that, like, the Glens, is that going to affect the Glens also? Because I know some camps are starting earlier and-
So maybe, just maybe explain the Glens rebel situation as well?
So actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Charlan and the Glens have amalgamated. They're now called the Glengarry Tribute.
No, Brigade.
Brigade, pardon me, sorry. The Glengarry Brigade. And they're going to be sharing their time between both the Glengarry Sports Palace and the Charlan Arena. And we did have discussions with the other ice arenas in the area to see what their startup dates would be, and they're very similar to ours. So they actually have a few days where they come in. They might start up the ninth or the tenth, but that's often used for community skate to break in the ice, and then the organizations can start from there.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, that's okay for the junior, junior B, but the little leagues like Bentham, you know, the traveling teams, I know there was a few years that we had concerns on.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we've been offering early startup dates as long as I've been in this position. And we see a similar pattern where we only have a small number of ice users. Those ice associations or those user associations have a limited budget, and they have to really work within that budget, and we know that their official startup date is October. So if they start up in August, they're a long ways away from their regular season.
Further questions or comments on that? Okay, go ahead.
You know, when you look at the revenues and, you know, declining, declining, and the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep these arenas going, and looking at Maxville being so much less than Glengarry, is it, and facing millions of dollars to replace the floor?
So-
In Maxville? And, and other things, you know, New Zamboni and all these things, you know, shouldn't we be entertaining the possibility of maybe mothballing Maxville until maybe population increases or usage increases the demand? You know, it could be great for pickleball, tennis inside, you know, with an aging, or generally an aged population in Maxville. You know, we just seem to be crashing forward with expenses, expenses, and there's really no logic behind it? That's, could we entertain the possibility of mothballing the Maxville Arena for a few years or those needed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm really pleased to report that Maxville has actually seen a huge increase of ice. So we've increased our revenues between, I'll say, between sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars in Maxville. We actually, in regular season, and we're talking about off-season here, so we're talking about early startup dates. So in the regular season, both arenas are maxed out for ice. We can't, we don't have hardly any ice available, and that's only if we have cancellations.
What about these numbers? That doesn't fit these numbers. These numbers don't fit what you're saying.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, again, the chart, if you look for the Glengarry Sports Palace, it reflects the startup date of August twenty-fifth. Meanwhile, the startup date is September fifteenth for Maxville. So I suspect if we were to start up the Glengarry Sports Palace around the same date as Maxville, we would have the same revenues, but so much less expenses. So our cost here is at the Glengarry Sports Palace. So that's what we're speaking to.
Follow up, go ahead.
You know, the numbers don't look great to me one way or another. And just secondly, facing the expenses that we're looking at, you know, if you're going to maintain it as a, you know, a quality arena or whatever, does this make sense? Is anyone else on the same page with me?
So anyone else want to?
I'll jump in. This was entertained by the last council. We, we talked about it at strategic planning at the beginning, and that was, our plan was to make Maxville more of a, like the dome of a multi-sports plex. We received a lot of discourse from that, not just from people from Maxville, but also people from the Kenyon, from Kenyon Township. We struck up a committee with, with members of the community, and that has seen what we're looking at right now is increased revenues. I, for one, at this point, wouldn't want to go down that path at this point. But, you know, again, just one vote, so I'll ask around if anybody else would like to speak to the matter. Counselor Martin?
The Maxville Arena is probably the one main attraction. And you shut down the Maxville Arena, you might as well roll up the side box and throw away the money that you just spent on the, on the water and everything else to expand and, and try to build into a vacant hole. Nobody's going to move into a village. If you're gonna, we're looking at the Mekuan expansion, and nobody's going to move into something where there are just no amenities left. I mean, it doesn't make sense where the Maxville Arena is getting just as much, if not more, use than the G S P. It doesn't make sense to close down. And, and like you say, you fought that fight already, and if you want to keep battling it, but I say, you got to keep it alive or just, you're going to tell the whole community, which is about the third the size of Alexandria population-wise, that they don't matter. So, and it's not just, like the mayor said, it's not just Maxville, it's Kenyon, and it's, and we go beyond. Part of the recreation survey that we did was to see how do we attract people into North Glengarry? And that arena is one of the, the main attractions. Shut her down.
Thank you, Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maxville's population is currently around seven thirty-five, seven hundred and thirty-five. Alexandria's three thousand, so it's not half. The nursing home of that seven hundred and thirty-five accounts for a hundred and twenty people. So you're down again to, what's that, six hundred and some? And, you know, the arena being, you know, the flagship or whatever, the only thing going, it, it's not working. It hasn't been working. The population has declined eight point three percent. I bring that up again. You know, like, the argument just isn't there to keep, sustain that. Millions of dollars more in repairs, Zamboni, all of this. I, I just don't see the logic.
I don't know, the last time you've been to Maxville, Counselor Cadell? But you have to show me the numbers that are telling me that the population is declining, because the numbers I'm looking at are just the opposite.
It's the Canada-
That the population is increasing and not declining.
It's the Canada census.
From what?
And that's wrong.
What year are you looking at?
Is that wrong?
Twenty twelve?
The last census.
It's eight years ago?
Okay, sorry.
I think it's twenty twenty-one.
I think the last one was done in twenty twenty, yeah, it was in the twenty twenties sometime.
Yeah, between the, the pre-de census and that one, it's, it declined eight point three percent. That's the census, it's just a fact. So you say that since that is booming?
Well, I like to see them, but I don't believe it.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Well, Counselor Cadell, I don't, I really don't know what you have against Maxville, since every time you speak, you speak against everything with regards to Maxville. And frankly, our job around this council table is to support our communities, not to tear them down.
Counselor Cadell.
I have nothing against, you know, that's to say, you just hate Maxville, that's all. You know, that's such a childish, you know, comment. I, I'm looking at facts. I'm looking at the business of North Glengarry. I'm looking at how we succeed as a business. And everything that goes to Maxville, the millions that have been spent, the debt that we have, hasn't done anything. It's not working, you know? And I say, when do we say enough? You know, throwing good money after bad. And, and this is nothing against the people of Maxville or anything about Maxville. It's business, it's the business of North Glengarry. How can you say we should ignore facts? We should just keep throwing money, more money? And, and it's, so far, it's not working. That's, and, you know, for anyone from Maxville, I love you guys, you know? It's, it's a great- It's a it's a great town. I I'd love to live in Maxwell myself. But this is a business we're running here. It's not a, you know, it's not a cell of what United Nations gift organization or something like that. It's just I'm looking at facts, nothing against anybody. And I just wish everyone would look at the facts and judge where we go as a business from there.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Martin.
Well, I I just think your facts are all skewed. And I I can't believe that where you're seeing a decline in population, it's just it's just not happening. You can make up all the numbers you want, but still, this is an arena. And it's not just, you you seem to have in your head, the only people using it is Maxwell. And it's, I don't expect a whole. And quite frankly, when you talk about the people in the manner, they use they use the arena there. They don't go skating, they don't do the shinny hockey and 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 public skating. But they use the arena and the facilities there on a regular basis. So to, I don't know, I don't know what your the problem is, Brian. But the Maxwell Arena has been been there much longer than North Glengarry. Okay, it's something that's forty years, fifty years old. I don't know what we're getting at. But we're, it's it's an institution in Maxwell. And quite frankly, the first first indoor arena in Glengarry was in Maxwell. You can look that one up. So historical wise, it wasn't that arena, but it's where hockey, indoor hockey started in Glengarry. So anyway, I let's take, we'll take a vote, I don't care. We got to keep that arena.
Thank you, further questions or comments? Okay, we'll we'll move to the second part of the equation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the second point I wanted to address was tournaments. And at this point, we just wanted to speak to the fact that at the beginning of the year, we send out the contracts and the associations are allowed to indicate which weekends they want to have tournaments. And we never capped those. In the past, most associations were successful as using tournaments as fundraisers. But what we've seen over the last few years is there's a trend for the associations in North Glengarry to go away from tournaments. So they still try to book them, thinking that they can fill them up. And then as they get closer to the date, they realize that they cannot fill the tournaments and they cancel them out. And the issue with that is your tournaments are booked at the beginning of the season. And that is ice that normally, if that tournament was in there, it would be sold to the associations for their practices or for their games. So that that ice would a hundred percent be sold. What we face is when they return a block of ice, as you can tell from the documentation that we supply, if they return a twenty twenty three hour block, we're left scrambling trying to place that ice. And we're not successful in doing that. So even the numbers in the report, those are the numbers that are net. Those are numbers where staff has worked hard to fill in ice time. And those are the hours that were left holding and vacant. So we we do flip those into public skating and shinny hours when we have those ice times. But it's unrealistic to have an arena like the Glengarry Sports Palace sitting there a whole Saturday and have no takers for ice. So we're looking at limiting each organization to one tournament. That doesn't mean that we can't entertain a special occasion or another tournament, but we will ask them to prepay for a portion of the ice, just to make sure that they're going to commit to it and they'll make the effort to fill up that tournament. So again, these are two items that we're bringing to council to help us really balance out our budgets this year. Because it is a significant loss for us when those tournaments get canceled a month prior to the the events. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Anne, I'm just wondering, because I do have younger friends that have kids. And they mentioned like they always complain about something for their for for the arena, the ice time not available and everything. And now, but it like I agree with the number, I agree with the the idea of it. And it makes sense. But if there's any pushback from the community or the the minor hockey different teams, is there any way that we can maybe work with them? Like, like, you know, let's say Bentham, they want to put two tournaments and they're very.
If I could speak to it, there's there just are no tournaments here anymore.
Okay.
There are, there are. And and truthfully, what we did at the time was we told them that if they booked a tournament, they're going to be responsible for paying for all the ice. And then, of course, it's, you know, we're minor hockey. So I think, Jacques, this is the the best route. And if they have one great super weekend of tournaments, then that's great for the facility. But if we can sell those, those, the ice rental at the beginning of the year, that'll be filled. AAA or any of these will be will be picking up that stuff easily. And if, you know, and I I look at just even this weekend in Alexandria and Osh, if the AAA tournament was in Maxwell as well.
Yep, both places.
The restaurants in Alexandria were were full with with people. So it was, they were in town all weekend and it was it was really good, so.
Okay, okay. Further, sorry, continue.
That's okay, I just, yeah, it's just that we have room to work. And then sometimes, you know, because I did, you know, we had issues before. And I just want to make my, show my concern of that they wanted to put two and they're not too sure and everything. Then they sell, well, you're taking away hours from us. You know, I'm going to hear that, but that's okay, yes.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we always work with the associations. Our goal is to try to make everybody happy. But at this point, we also have an obligation to be fiscally responsible when it comes to the arenas. And that's why we're bringing these issues to council.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? So the motion reads for both those approvals at this point. So I will call the vote on this. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to award R F T for Maxwell District Sports Complex Engineering Services. Counsel Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Manley. That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives a staff report number C S twenty twenty four dash thirteen. Award R F T for Maxwell District Sports Complex Engineering Services. That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry directs the mayor and the chief administrative officer to enter into a contract with one zero zero nine seven zero four seven Canada Inc., operating as E V B Engineering in the amount of seventy thousand and sixty dollars for the engineering services for the Maxwell District Sports Complex, ice surface floor and dashboard replacement. And that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry directs staff from the geotechnical testing and structural inspections to determine the scope of work to repair the east wall. And that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry approves the transfer of the remaining funds from this capital project into a construction reserve for the Maxwell District Sports Complex's cement pad and dashboard replacement.
Thank you. Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February twenty sixth, we issued the request for tenders for the engineering services for the Maxwell District Sports Complex. We had two firms participate in the non mandatory site visit in Maxwell on March fourth. So the R F T was actually divided into two sections. So Section A specifically addressed the engineering designs for the new ice surface, the fire prevention components, and the provision of Class B cost estimates. And those cost estimates will allow us to prepare the budget for grant applications in the future. Section B addressed the costs to evaluate the issues with the east wall of the building, which council noted during the recreation facilities tour this fall, and to evaluate the sizing of the new electrical refrigeration systems controls panel for the refrigeration plant. The panel is forty six years old, and many modifications have occurred to the refrigeration plant since nineteen seventy eight, when the facility opened. So as a matter of fact, recent components include the addition of the glycol loop and a larger volume condenser. With the proposed modifications to the arena slab, we recognize that the electrical panel will need to meet certain specific upgrades and metrics. And it's important for us to know what those are to be able to spec the replacement properly. For the tender, the closing date was March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. And at that time, we received three submissions, one from Architecture Forty Nine, the other from E V B Engineering, and the last from Barry Bryan Associates Engineering. They were catalogued with the assistance of our director of finance, Zoe Boogie. And the submissions were follow following this were reviewed by Nick Hanson, our facilities lead hand, as well as Jerome Mondry, the equipment operator over at the Maxwell facility, and myself. So the table shows scores based on a hundred, and the pricing does exclude H S T. For the stage one, which is based on seventy points, we saw that all three firms have incredible experience in servicing these types of projects, as well as their proposed resources and the understanding of the project. And they all scored sixty two. The second stage was based on pricing. And the lowest pricing was seventy thousand and sixty dollars by E V B, followed by Architecture Forty Forty Nine at ninety eight thousand five hundred and sixty, and then Barry Bryan Associates at one hundred and forty thousand. It's important to note that these prices do include the costs for both Section A and Section B. What's excluded is the testing itself. And the results of sec stage one and two show that E V B scored ninety two points. And therefore, we suggest that council awards a contract to E V B Engineering. In addition to the award, we also propose that the remaining funds be used for the geotechnical testing and the structural inspections. We expect those to be twenty five thousand dollars. And the reason we'd like to go ahead with this work is that we know that we're going to be going into a construction tender at one point. And we want to be able to include the information for the east wall if it does require repairs. And the only way that we're going to know that is if we do that structural investigation. So there will be some funding remaining. We expect it to be around a hundred thousand dollars. And we propose that council move this into a construction reserve. We know from the past, and when we do write grant applications, the government really looks favorably on a project that is shovel ready, which we will be with the engineering designs, as well as the municipality showing that it's been fiscally responsible and has money in reserve to pay for these projects. So that is our proposal. And we expect that with everything that's being done here, we will be able to be ready for any grant, grants that do come up. And we noted also earlier this March that the province of Ontario announced that they would be launching a new two hundred million dollar Community Sports and Recreation Infrastructure Fund. So we're not sure what the criteria is going to be for the application process. But we do know that everything bodes well for us having those engineering designs in hand and also having a reserve fund set aside for this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Counsel Madden, then Counsel Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick one, Anne, you mentioned non mandatory onsite. And the two showed up as, am I safe to presume that it was Architecture Forty Nine and E V B?
Absolutely. We did offer the opportunity to Barry Bryan Associates to come and that we would accommodate their visit at any time. And they they chose not to visit the site.
Good enough, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions is if you get a grant, is it a percentage of the full cost?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I, we're not certain what the conditions are for this grant. If we use what we had at the Glengarry Sports Palace, the municipality was responsible for twenty nine percent of the grant. And the rest was shared between the federal government and the provincial government. So our hopes is by the province announcing this type of a grant, they're probably seeking to see if the federal government will piggyback on something like this.
Okay, I've seen more depth there. But if if they do this study here, if you weren't including the arena floor and dashboards, would the study be less, would the cost be less? I mean, just to examine the structure of it, I mean, I could buy that you don't want the building to fall down or whatever. But, you know, engineering the floor and all that, is that a big part of this?
So that is the whole goal of the engineer services. That's exactly it. So it's a replacement of the arena slab, the dashboards, upgrading of the fire components.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know E V B is a very busy company. They've got a lot on the go. And and I'm just curious if you're confident that they can meet your your timelines.
So I'm hoping that the experience that we gleaned through the Glengarry Sports Palace will be very valuable. And you can rest assured that we will be following the close the project very closely. And we do have a very reasonable timeline for delivering the project.
Further questions or comments? Counsel Martin.
Well, I like the numbers, it's considerably less than the two hundred thousand that we had budgeted for that. And I like the idea of putting the rest into a fund for upcoming construction and and structural inspections and stuff. That's good. Thank you for your work.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're really pleased to see that now that we've come out of COVID, that the pricing is much more competitive. Because usually, a rule of thumb is ten percent for designs.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to C I P application for one seventeen Main Street in Alexandria. Counsel Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Madden. That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report C S twenty twenty four dash fourteen, C I P application for one seventeen Main Street South in Alexandria. And that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry approves the Community Improvement Plan project at one seventeen Main Street South Alexandria, Ontario, submitted by property owner Stefan and Ginny Minard. Program B, Building Improvement Grant, representing a matching grant of fifty percent up to a maximum of seven thousand five hundred dollars for two facades visible from the street. Program C, Commercial Signage, Civic Address Signage and Commercial Honing Grant, program representing a matching grant of fifty percent up to a maximum of two thousand dollars. Program E, Building Permit Grant, representing a grant equal to one hundred percent for eligible building permit fees up to to a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars. And Program G, Municipal Loan Program of ten thousand dollars. Total grants, ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, total loan, ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dan. My apologies.
Shortest report ever. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as counsel may have heard, back in February twenty twenty four, Bell announced that it would be rebranding a portion of its The Source stores and closing others. Unfortunately, the branch that was being operated out of Maxwell is not going to be one of the branches that's going to be rebranded. So the business owners, Ginny and Stefan Minard, are now looking at rebranding the store under the G S Tektronix banner. And they are proposing to install hardboard siding in a medium gray color to replace existing blue siding on the property. They also will be replacing four new windows and the window trim on the front facade. They're going to be adding goose neck lighting above the signage and also adding corner signage. Now, I would like to mention that the signage is going to be coming back to the Arts, Culture and Heritage because it hasn't been finalized as yet. And that will be approved by the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee before going into production. The estimate does not include the cost to remove sandblast and repaint the railings, nor does it include the cost to do the mortar. Unfortunately, the property owners were not able to get those quotes in time. But ultimately, it wouldn't have increased the amount of funding that they were able to get under the grant because it's capped at seventy five hundred dollars for two facades. Their eligible expenses are at twenty five thousand dollars, a little over that, actually, for the Program B facade. And as I mentioned, the program is capped at seventy five hundred dollars. Under Program C, that's a signage component, they're looking at spending upwards of seven thousand dollars for their signs. And that program is also capped at two thousand dollars. There's a building permit to obtain, and that program is capped at seven hundred and fifty dollars, which brings us to that total amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And they will also be taking advantage of the municipal loan program, which is ten thousand dollars. So these funds are already approved under the twenty twenty four budget by council. And we're asking for council's approval for this community improvement program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Counsel Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say it's nice to see them taking advantage of it. And it's another one that I think will really improve the look of Main Street, we'll say. I only get to see these now here that I don't sit on the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee anymore. So this is nice to see and glad that they're taking advantage of it.
Thank you. Counsel Massey.
Hopefully, at a later date, they'll get to make another application for the remaining of the building. It's a very nice building, very old building. It's a very nice building, very old building. Remember, there was a grocery, a depenar in there and everything, and it just, it'd be nice to fix it up a little bit on top, too.
Go ahead.
They are putting, I think they are, through you, Mr. Mayor, they are putting in, like, they're spending twenty-five thousand dollars on the project, so they are, they are spending some of their money to, on this, too, or whatever, for sure, so, yeah.
Just want to say, in nineteen eighty, I was in the depenar in there, buying candy with friends, and the nineteen eighty miracle on ice was on TV, and we sat, they let us sit in there and watch the whole game and eat our candy, so, I know I'm dating myself, but it was awesome. Okay, any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, there are none opposed. And Treasury Department, thank you, Anne. Moving on to the Treasury Department, First Quarter Variance Report, Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff's report TR twenty twenty-four dash nine, First Quarter Variance Report, for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have analyzed the budget as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and have provided a detailed breakdown of costs. Items of note include utility costs, photocopier and postage expenses, association and membership fees, and the recreation booking software. Staff have also identified expenses allocated to the wrong accounts, which will be updated to reflect the actuals. The total variance after the first quarter is twenty-nine percent. Thank you.
That's great, and it's very easy to read with the highlights, and I'm sure Councillor Massey will love that, he's been asking for this, so this is great. Any questions or comments? It's like it was too good?
I couldn't get my eyes off. A little bit too good, Zoe.
So, okay, there are no questions, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Good job, Zoe. Don't worry, Jacob, after yours, I'll say good job to you.
Okay, I hope so. Jeez.
Okay, moving on to Planning, Building and Bylaw Enforcement Department, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number Z nineteen twenty-three, Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaw number Z nineteen twenty-three, and that bylaw number Z nineteen twenty twenty, nineteen dash twenty twenty-three be read a first, second, and third time, and adopted in open council this eighth day of April twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if council remembers, a couple months ago, we had the counties come in to do a presentation for both an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment for McEwen. So basically, we're bringing it now to council. It, it passed, the official plan amendment passed at the last council, county council meeting. There's now the twenty-one day waiting period, but since no one, no appeal has been filed or whatever, we're pretty confident that it's going to go through. So just to save some time for McEwen, we're presenting this to council now, so the bylaw can be passed. So we also have the twenty-one day waiting period, so before, like, our zone, our bylaw would, will only be final and binding after the official plan amendment. So this was for the McEwins' Agri Centre in Maxwell at forty Catherine Street, as you can see on the little map there. So basically, the official plan changed from residential district to, to allow for the expansion of McEwen. So now, after that, we also have to change the, our zoning to match the official plan. So basically, we're taking a little bit of rural area, some residential first density holding, and some restricted agricultural, and we're changing, changing it all to our general industrial special exception two, which already existed for McEwen. So basically, the special exception two just deals with a seventy-meter buffer zone from all residential lots, so that's not going to change. The business is not going to get any closer than, than it is right now to the, to the village of Maxwell, basically. It's also to allow for a reduced parking requirement, because with this expansion, they're not really growing the business, it's more, it's more just to grow like the, the operational side of the business, so there's not going to be more people onsite. And it's also to deal with noise. So basically, the MG two allows for, the, there's a provincial regulation that's, that specifies how much noise they can create and at what time of the day, so this is also not going to change. And this zoning bylaw amendment for us, so they will, we had a meeting last week, they will apply for their site plan control, so council will also see that coming. So as mentioned, there's a seed storage warehouse that's going to be built, a larger building that's also going to protect the residents from noise. There's going to be another fertilizer tower, like they have right now, and there's also a truck repair building. So this, this, right now, this evening, is to pass the bylaw. We have received no additional comments from members of the public or from any other agencies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the time, when we, you brought this, this is the first time to council, which was about a month ago or something, we mentioned that to maybe have, ask McEwen to put trees?
Yes.
So that's going to come after in the site plan?
Yeah, that's been discussed with them, and, yeah, it's definitely going to be discussed at site plan control, we're going to ask for a little buffer. But at site plan, they're going, like, we're going to have some, some closer views, and you'll see that, the, council will see that the, the large seed storage warehouse will do a lot of, of work on the noise and, and visibility also. So trees, we'll discuss the trees definitely at that time, they're aware that we asked for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to point out that this is a surrender of residential land, of potential development, land being converted to business, which I, some people refer to increasing employment, but you say there's no, there will be an additional number of people on site. Is that?
Yeah, so basically, the, the, the lands were zoned residential first density, but they were put on hold because of its location. So no residential development could have happened there either way because of the existing McEwen business. So it was still Zone R one, it was put on hold, so no development can happen. So right now, what we're doing is, we want to change the residential to industrial, but for that, we had to change the official plan first. So the residential was just there, basically, to, to protect any development, but the official plan was also residential, so that's why we had to change both, but there, there was no, there was no options of any residential development there either way, even before we did this official plan, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to bylaw number nineteen dash twenty-four, Exemption from Part-Lot Control Revise, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry, excuse me, adopts Part-Lot Control bylaw number nineteen twenty twenty-four and amend bylaw number twenty-one twenty-three, and that bylaw nineteen twenty twenty-four be read first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this eighth, eighth day of April twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this bylaw here is a part lot control that we have seen at last council meeting. So it's basically the part lot control that we're trying to remove for Gergus Tavadroussis' four plex units, so where Mike Sovi built. So what happened with this property, we weren't aware, I'm, I'm not going to throw the counties under the bus like Chantelle did earlier, I'm going to say that everybody forgot, but, no, anyway, what's, the, the reason for that, it's just because we're not, we're, it's like, we're not used to do part lot control, especially not with townhomes like that, okay? So basically, we just said we're creating four new lots, boom, and that's it. So what's happening now, which we did not realize, is that the two middle units do not have access to their backyard. So basically, legally speaking, if your two neighbors on each end are not friendly people, they could technically prevent you from walking on their land to go and cut your grass, so you'd have to go right through your unit with your lawnmower to cut the grass in your backyard. This, like, some, some townhomes like that are made with garages that can go right through, especially for that. Here, it's not the case, the garage have, like, there's a house behind. So what we were not aware, because it's, it's new for us, what, what we normally see is that the two end units on the plan that you have in your report, there's part one and part two. So the surveyor created two strips of land on both ends of the end properties in favor of the two middle units. So basically, the two owners in the middle are allowed to walk on the side of the other guy's property with their lawnmower to access their backyard, basically, that's what it does. So they have a, a legal right-of-way to access their backyard with either machinery, their lawnmower, et cetera. So we, we were not aware of that, so we passed the site plan control without that. So now, basically, we're just doing another exact same part lot control, but with these two right-of-ways on the two end units. So this whole report is, is only really to add those two right-of-ways. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Councillor Madden.
Just one quick one on this, Jacob, we, at some point, we've passed something else so that these are separated as individual properties? We haven't done that yet, have we?
That's what it was.
That's this and the?
Why? So we passed it before for individual properties.
We have them pinned already.
But that's what happened, the individual properties in the middle had no access to their backyard, so the lawyer was like, hey, you did this, it's the county's fault.
Okay, no, I just couldn't remember if we had, if we had done the, pinned the four of them already. Thank you.
That, so right now, we passed the bylaw, we can't undo the bylaw, we're just going to amend that existing bylaw.
Okay, further questions or comments? Seeing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Councillor Cadell.
Do you foresee these passageways as being, you know, deck blocks or something, or, you know, would it be, you walk over the other guy's lawn and then go to your own lawn?
Well, the, the, we don't have the exact wording at this point on how it's written, but it's a legal right-of-way. So technically, the owners of the two end unit cannot do anything that would prevent access to the middle property. So they couldn't do anything, like, like you said, like, put some, some interlock with steps and whatnot, they could not do that. They would have to leave a strip where someone could go with the lawnmower at the back of their property. And that's, it's, it's the typical way of doing it, so we're not seeing, like, it's the first time I do it personally, but that's, typically, we spoke with two lawyers, and that's how it's normally done, yeah.
So, so basically, if they built a fence, they'd have to leave room at the end of the property to go around the fence, or?
Uh, yeah, or they could not even build a fence.
Yeah, they couldn't block it off.
Why?
Okay, further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to Road Widening bylaw number twenty twenty-four, Concession Ten, Glenn Robertson. Councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts report number BP twenty twenty-four dash ten, Road Widening, Concession Ten, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw twenty twenty-four, sorry, twenty dash twenty twenty-four, being a bylaw to acquire and dedicate a portion of the property for road widening purposes, and that bylaw twenty twenty twenty-four be read first, second, and third time, and adopted in open council this eighth day of April twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a typical road widening bylaw, so the owner, Chris Terret, is creating two new lots in rural area on Concession Ten Road, so there's no planning application other than this, so the lots are, are currently being done. The only thing that was missing here is because of the road width, there was one meter missing, this is the boundary, so there's one meter missing on our side, so this is just a bylaw to dedicate that strip of land on both properties to, for township purposes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to Road Widening bylaw number twenty-one twenty twenty-four, Kenyon Concession Road One, Apple Hill, Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts report number BP twenty twenty-four eleven, Road Widening, Kenyon Concession Road One, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw number twenty-one twenty twenty-four, being a bylaw to acquire and dedicate a portion of a property for road widening purposes. That bylaw number twenty-one twenty twenty-four be read a first, second, and third time, and adopted in open council this eighth day of April twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So same thing here, Road Widening bylaw, I don't know if any of you actually looked at the, our plan, it's a little bit odd, because the owner, Justine, is creating one new, one-acre property in rural land, so again, we're not going to see this file again, but the, our plan shows that the road, that the road is wide enough where the new property is created, but then it goes into a curve, and there's just that little tiny section that had to be dedicated for a road widening bylaw. So if any of you are wondering why there's only this piece, it's only at that end of the property that the road wasn't twenty meter, so that's why this bylaw is just for that piece. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Makes sense, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Great job, Jacob, great job. Okay, moving on to items under the consent agenda, Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for the information purposes only.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Notice of motion, our next regular public meeting of council will be Monday, April twenty-ninth, six P M. here in the council chambers. Nobody has a question? Jenna? Nothing? Okay, so we will be moving into closed session, so we will take a two-minute break. So thank you, everyone, for joining us for our meeting tonight, and hopefully, everyone enjoyed the, the solar eclipse today and wakes up tomorrow morning and can still see, so, Councillor Manley, I'm really fingers crossed for you with, so, thank you and have a great night.